...for a comprehensive permit at 40 Center Street. Just to remind everyone, my name is Jesse Geller. To my immediate left is Chris Hussey. To Mr. Hussey's left is Steve Chumenti and to my right is Kate Poverman. As people will remember, the town has received a grant from Mass Housing Partnership to engage a consultant who is an expert in 40B matters. And our expert is Judy Barrett. Judy is in a meeting right now, but will be joining us in about 25 minutes. So she'll sneak in and have a seat. Some general comments about status. The ZBA has engaged the services of an architecture peer reviewer. His name is Clifford Bomer. I got it right? He is of Davis Square Architects and he will obviously be reviewing those things that architects review and will be in, not this week, but the next hearing. Is that correct? On August 1st, which will start roughly at 7:00. On June 9th, at 8:30 in the morning, the ZBA members had the opportunity with the public and others who were interested to walk the site. It was not an opportunity for testimony, but we did have a fairly good ability to go around the building. And unfortunately, there was some miscommunication and the improvements were not staked. So what we're going to do is we've, as some people may have heard, we will ask the applicant to stake the improvements and we will go back for another site visit and we'll figure out the timing of that. The purpose of this evening's hearing, or the focus of this evening's hearing, will be to accept testimony from various town departments and boards, as well as to receive testimony from the public. We've gotten a number of letters from a variety of boards. We've, and Maria, you can correct me, but I believe what we've received to date are we've gotten correspondence from the deputy fire chief concerning fire safety. We've received communications from DPW Transportation and Engineering. We've received communications, again, written fashion, from the Preservation Commission, and we've received materials in writing from the planning board.
And also town council.
And town council, yes. Correct. Thank you. We will hear tonight, unless they run out of the room, I see Peter at the back. We will hear from Mr. Ditto on behalf of Transportation and Engineering. We will hear from Ms. Morelli on behalf of Planning Board. And I understand we will, is Jonathan Simpson? Jonathan Simpson, over in the corner. And I understand that also Selectman Woschinski may wish to say a few words. Actually, before you speak, let me ask the applicant. Are there any updates in terms of project? Anything further to raise with us? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morelli.
Okay. The first matter, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first matter that I wanted to address was the follow-up to the review for application completeness. I did receive the materials that I highlighted as omissions that were required per the statute. The one thing that I just got this evening are the full-sized plans of the scale drawings. And so I think the application is complete. There is one matter regarding Article 8.26, which is the stormwater management requirement. And that's something that Peter Ditto will address when he speaks later.
Thank you.
Okay. I also just wanted to point out that Mass Housing did submit a letter clarifying the affordable unit mix. And in short, there isn't an issue. The Pell is legitimate. And Ms. Lacy from Mass Housing does explain that in her letter.
Thank you also. Many questions at this point? No? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you?
Did you have anything before I go into the planning board comments?
Well, do you want to go into planning board comments? Or do you want me to call? I know you have something of a visual presentation. Do you want me to call on others first?
One thing I suggest is sometimes it's easier if, because the planning board is really looking at the site design. And it's really easy to just have a reminder of the project proposal, the site design, everything comes out of the site design. So I think the other comments might make more sense, unless Chairman Woschinski is here and you'd like to hear from him first.
No. He wants to see the visuals.
Okay. All right. I think it would make sense for Peter Ditto to speak after I do.
Sure.
And this is probably the lengthiest portion. I just wanted to update you very quickly on just a summary of the project proposal. This is in a, the M multi-family 1.0 district. The lot size is 10,900 square feet. And the proposal is for 45 units with an FAR of 4.5. 17 parking spaces for those 45 units and 70 bedrooms. As you can see here, actually, I don't have my laser pointer here. The site is here and it's right across the street. The most prominent landmark would be the parking lot behind the Coolidge Corners Theater. Okay. Just to go a little bit into existing conditions and the surrounding context, this is 40 Center, the current, the existing structure. It is a two-story Georgian Revival built in 1922. About last year, the owner at the time, Warren Becker, did submit a demolition review application to the Preservation Commission. Staff did have an initial finding of significance using the criteria found in our demolition bylaw. The Preservation Commission did follow up and supported that initial finding of significance and imposed a 12-month stay, which expires next month in August. Okay. One thing that you don't see here, there is parking on the site. It's actually a driveway to the left and it's, the parking is surface parking, about seven or eight parking spaces in the rear. Okay. So just to, again, to get a sense, I'm sorry, the zoning, this is an M 1.0 district and it's surrounded by other multi-family districts of increasing density. There's, of course, the general business district to the right. By looking at this, you'll see a concentration of different zoning districts and you might get the impression that because of that concentration of different zoning districts of increasing density, different lot sizes that vary a great deal and possibly a range of building typologies, that there might not be a consistent development pattern to inform the design principles for this project. However, the planning board felt really strongly that if we look a little more closely at the surrounding context, we will find there really is a short list of design principles and a consistent development pattern. You know, one thing that they do want to make clear, the site itself can support increased density and it could be viewed as a transition site. But one thing that they did want to emphasize is what to look at as one of the reference points in the surrounding context. You might recall this slide from the applicant's presentation from the first hearing. And this is to give you an aerial view, just to provide some context. This is, of course, the project site, Center Street, Beacon to Williams, and of course, Harvard Street is parallel. And what this is showing is certainly true. There are buildings of varying height. They do range from 45 to maybe over 100 feet. But one thing the planning board wants to point out, that these buildings with especially more significant heights, they're going to be located at major thoroughfares like you'll see at Williams here and beyond, or Beacon Street. So they're going to be focused or located at intersections where there you have wider streets. What we felt was overlooked was this neighborhood here of two and a half story homes. A lot of them are single and two-family, or in some cases, three-family homes, but clearly under 45 feet. And as you move closer to the business district, Coolidge Corner, toward Harvard Street, you do get a sense that there's still not high rises in that area, even as you're transitioning to the business district, that the height is pretty much around 45 feet. This is just zooming in a little bit closer. You might get an idea and see that there are actually blocks where you see those single and two-family homes. So there's definitely something here that defines that streetscape. And that's really what I wanted to go over with you. One of the things that's pretty significant, if we zoom down a little bit closer and we're at street level, these are carefully conserved properties. So these properties are not going anywhere. And if you're walking on this street for a good two blocks toward Williams, you do get the sense that this is, this is helping defining the streetscape. There is a consistent front yard setback. There's a really welcoming residential feel. And one thing, if you're involved in planning revitalizing downtowns or neighborhoods, one of the things you're trying to attract is residential. Why? Because it gives you that sense of welcoming. It's a safe community. So one of the things that we want to reinforce and not overlook is the residential character and certainly the modal pattern, which I'm going to go over in a second. I just wanted to point out a little bit more of what we have on the other side of the street. Actually, one thing before we go on, the minimum front yard setback in this zoning district is 15 feet. And one thing that's very interesting on both sides of this street, at least for two blocks, the modal pattern for the front yard setbacks well exceeds that. On one side of the street, it's about 22 feet, and on the other side, it's about 27. This will give you another aerial view of what I'm speaking of. You might not be able to see those labels, but here is the project site. And these lines pretty much are drawn to where we see a consistent front yard setback. So on this side of the street, the even side, we see about a 22-foot front yard setback. On the other side of the street, it's about 27. And curiously, this is one of the buildings that really stands out as kind of like, not like the others, or it's 70 Center Street, which is about 45 feet, or 70 feet high. What you'll notice here is that it's maybe double the height of what is allowed, the maximum allowed in this district, but it's also double the front yard setback. So that's an important thing that the planning board and planners in general are going to look at, is that ratio of setback to height. So to accommodate that excessive height in relation to what's surrounding that, there is an increased, not only front yard setback, but side yard setback. Okay. And this is just another close-up look. This is the row house, the three-unit row house to the left of the project site. And that's that, pretty much, that consistent front yard setback with landscaping that I was referring to. Not to overlook what is the rest of the, I did say this is a transition property. To the right of the site is a parking lot. It definitely provides sub-distance and open space. Behind that, you'll see 19 Winchester, which is a good, maybe 60 feet away from the property line. That's about an eight or nine-story building. Across the street, of course, is the parking lot behind the Coolidge Corners Theater. And here you have a vista as well. You don't see the very tall buildings that were pointed out in that slide way back there. And just stepping back, we talked about sightlines and I was giving you a walk through the neighborhood where you could see the two, the single and two-family homes. Conversely, this is a sightline for that neighborhood. There really isn't any opportunity for buffering on the site because of the right side setback and because of the parking lot itself. So that's important to keep in mind. The planning board was very particular about the massing of that building and the view that the two or single-family neighborhood would see. Okay. Just to go through a few things here.
I'm sorry, Maria.
Yes?
When you say that the planning department was very concerned, are you talking about, or would be?
The planning board. The planning board wanted to point out, and this is actually what I'm going to get into, some incongruities with the design itself. And I think it's a good segue to this slide. Let me know if it doesn't answer your questions. So this is a rendering of the proposed building for this development. First of all, one of the incongruities was really that front yard setback. So when you look at the site plan, you'll see where the foundation is. It's about two and a half feet away from the property line. But if you go up a level, it's about 13 feet ceiling height here for the ground level, this bay is actually flush with the property line. So that's essentially a zero setback condition just for that bay, but it does contribute to that sense of this massive building being on top of the sidewalk. But more importantly, it's not, it's not consistent with the development pattern in that area. The other big thing is that you see prominently the garage door. Now, I understand that this rendering doesn't show that it has been set back 15 feet. So this rendering would need to be updated. Nonetheless, it is taking up a good proportion of that ground level on the front facade. And that was something the planning board felt was another incongruous element, to have garage or front yard parking, parking, the parking level so prominent on the front facade. The other, just as we're looking at massing, so this is another example of projections that are going into the setbacks. So the site plan is showing where the foundation is, but what it's not showing are where these balconies are actually going into the side yard setbacks. Now, why is this important? One of the techniques for diminishing massing is to carve up these cubes, right? To carve away and use articulation to mitigate that massing. And what the projections like the bay and the balconies do, they actually add or spread out that massing rather than articulate the massing and make it feel somewhat diminished. You get an example here. This building is the row house to the left and its height at the ridge is about 45 feet, but you get a really strong sense of the cornice line where it is. And that's about more in keeping with the existing building, maybe a little bit taller. Some other things that the planning board felt that, especially with the ground level height being at 13 feet and it being a parking level, it really reads strongly as office commercial rather than a residential motif. And that seemed to be a very striking thing that needed to be addressed. The other things were concerning the height. I mean, as you can see here, the height, including the parapet, is about 70 feet. Now, I should point out, the planning board letter does recommend eliminating a story. But of course, I was at the planning board meeting and the discussion really wasn't unanimous concerning the heights. I wanted to be fair and say that what really concerned the planning board mostly were the setbacks, not just the front setback, but the others as well. And we'll look at a few other slides. There were architectural elements that are really emphasizing verticality here, the fenestration, and maybe the patterning, how the materials were apportioned on the building that really emphasize the verticality. And the materials themselves, it reads clearly, I think, to the planning board as maybe downtown. And for a transition property, we like to see just something echoed from the surrounding neighborhood to help better integrate this project. Okay. Just looking at the site plan superimposed on the atlas map, again, this is just to reiterate how strongly the planning board felt about the modal pattern for the front yard setbacks. Here, just want to emphasize, the dash line is really showing where that property line is, how it is to the foundation. It's about two and a half feet. And what might not be clear here, because we don't have the building, is that there's about an eight-foot of space between the sidewalls of the row house and the proposed building. And if you consider that the building itself is taking up most of the lot and it is significantly higher than any other building in the area, the board felt it was really oppressive massing, that there really could be more space, especially in this particular area. Okay. And I just, just to state, I guess, the obvious, there really isn't over, open space here. And again, as you can see, the parking lot to the left isn't an opportunity to provide buffering or screening. Okay. Just another aerial view, because I wanted to show the rear yard of Butter, which is 19 Winchester. They do have a generous setback here, but one thing that we just wanted to point out is that there is, oddly enough, there is a swimming pool that is on the property line. Some of the things that the planning board were talking about in terms of location of the driveway and a maybe a safer location for the parking, might afford a deeper setback in the rear, just to have a little more space that it wouldn't be, you really wouldn't be impinging on the privacy or diminishing the open space amenities of the rear of Butter. Okay. I, just going back to 70 Center Street, because again, I don't want to overlook the fact that we do have apartment buildings in the area. And it might be helpful to see just a rough comparison of these two buildings, which are not too far apart. One, of course, is that front yard setback being 45 feet in relation to the 80-foot building. The other is just a really quick comparison. The depths of the site are pretty much the same, except for 70 Center being twice as wide. The amount of footprint and paving that's taken up a lot, coverage is about the same. We talked about front yard setback. To the building between the property line, despite the paving, there are really generous rear and left and right side setbacks. Let's see if I can get rid of that. Okay. The other thing worth noting is that there are a different number of units. So the FAR is considerably different. And the parking ratio for 70 Center is a little over one, as opposed to the Point 38. In general, the board was a little skeptical. It didn't think this was a practical ratio for the site and felt that some of the recommendations, which I will summarize toward the end, probably will diminish somewhat the program. And that might help with the parking ratio, but they did want to point out, as proposed, it seems really, they were skeptical. Okay. So just getting a little bit to public safety, and namely, the location and setbacks in regard to the driveway and the garage entrance. So this is the existing site plan. As you know, the property across the street is a parking lot with a two-way driveway in and out. And this is where the current nine-foot or so wide driveway is. And it's offset. That's just something to consider. It might be a consideration for the traffic peer reviewer. But what was of most concern, this is again, just as a comparison, the proposed site plan shifts that a little bit more. It is 20 feet wide, which is suitable, certainly, in keeping with their bylaw for properties that have seven or more parking spaces. But just to point out that it is shifted a little bit more so that it's almost directly aligned with one of those driveways. What is of particular concern, I would say, to the Director of Engineering and also the planning board, is really public safety. Now, in our bylaw under 6.04, any, there needs to be an analysis conducted by the Building Commissioner and the Director of Engineering regarding sight, visibility of pedestrians that are on the sidewalk within five feet on either side of the garage entrance. And that view is actually going to be at the midpoint of the driveway, six feet behind that property line. So this is not an analysis. This is just illustrating a concept of what the Director and the Building Commissioner would be looking at. They've already stated that there is some concern just having, even if the garage door is set back 15 feet. The fact is that there is a retaining wall. We don't know the heights of the retaining walls. And the fact that there is this building with, what you're not seeing here is that bay that projects. So they're just a little concerned about visibility with there being a very shallow front yard setback. This is a heavily, it's heavily trafficked by pedestrians. There's a lot of activity. It's a very walkable district, which is a plus, but that certainly adds to the public safety concerns. Okay. So just repeating again, this sense with the rendering, you can see, we were looking at the plan, this is just another view, in a heavily trafficked area, how on top of the sidewalk that feels. And then just to remind you of that setback that's currently there, that's really, allows for it, not only for aesthetic purposes to have more landscaping, but certainly visibility when you have a heavily trafficked sidewalks. Just another view, this is our famous farmer's market, but you can see people do really mill about. There's a lot of meeting up on the sidewalk. It's in conjunction with a lot of driveways that are already in the area. And we want it to be cognizant of how, this is also part of the surrounding context and is something that shouldn't be overlooked. So just to sum up, the planning board does strongly recommend increasing the front yard setback to 15 feet to improve visibility. Again, that is not in keeping with the modal pattern, which is far greater, but it is in keeping with the minimum zoning requirements. Exchange ground level parking with the rear yard surface parking. In other words, increase, retain the existing driveway in the left, increase it to 20 feet, and keep the surface yard, surface parking in the rear yard where it is, just expand it. I just want to make clear that there was some concern that the planning board was recommending a 60-foot rear yard setback, and that wasn't the case. Without designing the project, it's possible to have maybe two rows of rear yard parking, but the second floors and up could be either cantilevered or supported and be closer, maybe within 18 feet of the rear yard setback. Articulate the building to reduce massing and create a more human-scale entrance. Again, the planning board did put in their letter to reduce the height, but that wasn't a unanimous opinion. Certainly, the setbacks were far more important. Borrow architectural elements from the two-and-a-half-story neighborhood. And last, achieve a more practical parking ratio.
Thank you. Questions?
In the Mass Housing letter, basically, it points to the fact that there are several rather abnormally large buildings in the general vicinity. And I'm curious what to know, and I obviously wouldn't knock the top of your head, but what the ratio of apartments to parking is in those buildings?
That's actually a very good question. I did the comparison of 70 Center Street because it's the closest and it's certainly within that block that we would call the surrounding neighborhood. So the parking ratio there was like about 1.1. I think it was 47 parking spaces to 42 units.
Yeah. Parking. The other thing I would ask, just generally as a design element, and I noticed that they comment in several places on density, the Mass Housing letter. Interesting, because of course, we've been lectured about not using the term density in the past. But they note that the density of the proposal, which they refer to variously as a six-story building on page seven and as an eight-story building on page eight, which I guess is a six-story building. The density is 180 units per acre, because it's 45 divided by .25.
Correct.
And I'm curious, I'd be interested to know what is the, they then compare this to some generic urban setting they're imagining. I'm curious, though, what it is in that general neighborhood, actually.
Yep. That's, it's a good question. The reason why it can be a little problematic to do that, when I showed you the, okay, first of all, just to go back, so the density of the very last line in this chart, 180 dwelling units per acre compared to 70 Center, which is about 80 dwelling units per acre. Before I get into why it's a problem to come up with a general rule of thumb, I want to emphasize that the planning board really looks at land use metrics like setbacks.
No, I understand. I'm just, if Mass Housing thought it was worth mentioning, I'm curious really what it is for that particular neighborhood. Obviously, it would be less than 70 Center Street, because 70 Center Street itself is not typical of that neighborhood.
Correct.
It would be, I think, substantial plus.
Well, you have, you have a lot of smaller lots that are about 6,000 square feet. So it would really be hard to do a rule of thumb regarding density. And we just want to emphasize that we never look at that number alone, no matter what Mass Housing says, that we look in terms of providing guidance to the ZBA, looking at actual metrics like ratio of setback to height, spaces between buildings, any opportunity for buffering, what the modal pattern is for that particular. pattern is for that particular area so that we can give you some concrete issues to look at.
So even this uncharacteristically large building next door, the density is less than half the density-
I really can't speak to that. We have not done a density analysis just by grabbing that land area because there's just, there's so much that's inconsistent. We don't have a general-
Well, but 80 acres per unit is less than half of 180 acres per unit.
Yes, it is, and that's just looking at one site, you know.
And an untypical site at that.
It is, we just want to really look at apples, compare apples to apples, and not look at what might be considered maybe a single-family district because they're mostly single-family homes there, so that's why it's difficult to just look at a density analysis over an entire area.
Thank you.
Maria, could you remind me what the parking ratio is required in this district? I mean, the 1% ratio that's achieved by 70 even itself seems pretty sparse.
So if you have, in a multifamily district, if you have three bedrooms, then you have to have 2.3 parking spaces per unit.
So, so exceptions were made for 70 Center Street?
That was built in the late 60s.
Okay.
And I did, I did go through the files just to wonder how it came to be and what was the climate then, and it might have been a 60s thing, I'm not really sure.
Anything went down, yeah.
So, but I, yeah, it was probably different zoning at the time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Hussin?
Yeah, there was a big zoning change in the parking ratio about 1990 something ago, almost doubled what it was previously. No questions?
Thank you. I don't have any.
Okay.
Thank you, Maria.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more question.
Yes.
You said that the Planning Board was especially concerned with setback issues, and there was no unanimity relating to height, but is it fair to assume that it was not an either-or type discussion?
No, no, they were all unanimous about the setbacks, clearly, and also improving the building articulation. I think that there was probably one Planning Board member who felt very strongly about the height. If you just looked, if you were just to look at a site section and you were to see the roof line, he just felt based on that, it was, it really stood out. The other Planning Board members felt you're just talking about a story, and that the other, you know, increasing that left side setback, number one, was really important because not only do you have a safer location for the driveway and the parking, you'd have more space between the proposed building and the left side of Butter. Certainly, by relocating the parking in the rear, which, again, it's safer, it's more in keeping with the streetscape, could afford you maybe an 18-foot setback, which would help protect the open space amenities at the rear of Butter, and clearly, the front yard setback, they were, I mean, they were all unanimous about the front yard setback.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. Maria, what percentage of affordable is that?
Yes, and that's something I overlooked, and I think that's important to point out that I don't believe there are any affordable units at 70 Center.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call Peter Ditto, speak on behalf of Transportation and Engineering.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd just like to highlight some transportation and stormwater issues that has come to mind in the review we've taken to date. The Transportation Board requested that we submit the following comments on their behalf. That while the Transportation Board is generally supportive of transit-oriented development and reducing parking spaces to encourage use of alternative transportation modes, the reduction plan for this development is excessive. The Transportation Board recommended a ratio closer to one parking space, one space per dwelling unit. Since this development is being packaged as a transit-oriented, the following should be included to ensure this. The owner/tenant vehicles should be excluded from town-managed daytime and overnight resident parking programs. Covered bicycle racks for residents and their guests should be supplied, provided. Information packets, including MBTA routes passes, car share, taxi, and other alternative modes, should be provided to the tenants upon move-in. Lease or sale agreements should be required to include limits on vehicle ownership and require vehicles to be stored on private property. Forty-five, this 45-unit project triggers the town's Transportation Access Plan guidelines required for the transportation impact study and access plan submittal. The developer should follow the guidelines for developing this transportation impact study and access plan. The town requests approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the assignment of a traffic peer reviewer for an in-depth examination of the traffic study. The proposed building, as shown in the ground floor plan drawing, shows a building being set back from the front outline approximately 2 feet 7 inches. This is way too close to the front setback. Concern in addition to site distance is that vehicles leaving the garage will basically have to straddle the sidewalk before they can safely seat pedestrians. The analysis of the driveway site distance must be done in an engineering fashion as opposed to what was submitted in their package, which is basically pitches. As far as stormwater management, which is the town's Article 8.26, the stormwater management basically dictates the developer how we manage the stormwater before and after construction. This is a, was a federal requirement, part of our NIPD's permit back in, I want to say, the 90s. So this is something that we're required to implement through our federal permit. We have met with the developer's engineer, and we reviewed a preliminary plan, I want to say maybe about three or four weeks ago. We had a good meeting, we explained to the developer what we're looking for, and at that point in time, he took that information back with him, and I believe they're going to hold off until they figure out the exact footprint of the building. One of the main concerns we had at that point in time was that they were using the inside of the building to infiltrate groundwater, and that's not good engineering practice. That's all I have.
Okay. Let me jump in with a question. So, the issue that, excuse me, that you raise with respect to the placement of the stormwater recharger, that is an open issue pending a determination of further details on what the improvement looks like, and at that point, they'll come forward with a more finite or a finite stormwater plan, which will include somehow addressing this concern. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's your understanding?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I assume this is copacetic with the planning department?
Okay.
Mr. Simpson, do you want to speak to?
Oh, I don't really have anything prepared. I would just note that my memo has been submitted to the board, addressed some of the conversations I've had with Mass Historical and other 40B contacts, but I believe they generally apply here, but I have been answering questions.
Okay, so what Mr. Simpson is speaking about is, if the board members recall, there was a question raised at the first hearing that related to the Preservation Commission's actions in making a determination under the town's bylaw, which pertains to demolition of the structure, and that conversation then spread further, and I think there were some questions that related to the process that takes place with Mass Historical, and I believe, and you'll correct me, but I'm going to try and paraphrase, I think, my sense from reading what you've submitted is that they are two distinct processes, and that really what preservation does is it makes a determination about a demolition delay, essentially, and in this instance, they made the determination that it was appropriate for there to be a demolition delay, and as Ms. Morelli has pointed out, that demolition delay is up August 1st? 11th? 11th. So that process has taken place. There was no, and this sort of goes beyond what, so what I've characterized as your report, that's correct, right?
Yes, while some of, some of the analysis will be similar, you are absolutely right, there are two distinct analyses being performed by two distinct bodies.
Okay, okay. Thank you. My understanding is that the general question about process with Mass Historical was researched, and the ZBA members received a response, it's available to the public. Essentially, I took from the materials that we received, and they were circulated today, was two things. One, there is no preliminary report, there was some question about a preliminary report that would be the subject for passing along to Mass Historical, there is no report. Again, all that, the, sure. Did I butcher it enough?
No, it's just important to, like, so, the preliminary report, okay, there's only one preliminary report, and that is the demolition review report. There's not a preliminary report done concerning initial significance regarding national register eligibility, okay? So the town has a bylaw under 5.3 General Bylaw regarding demolition, and there are four criteria A through D regarding initial findings for significance, and this, under the demolition review, this particular structure met the criteria C and D under Brookline's demolition bylaw. The National Register, the NPS, National Park Service, they have separate criteria A through D, but they're different, so there was not a report coming up with initial findings for national register eligibility, okay? So I just wanted to make that clear.
Do you want to continue on with some of the, I mean, there was-
Okay.
There was further information?
Was it, so, what Jonathan Simpson's letter clarifies is, what is Mass Historical's role with project review, and how does that dovetail with the ZBA comprehensive permit process? And I'm referring to state regs found under 950 CMR 71, and under those regs, it states that, you know, what is the trigger, what triggers Mass Historical's review? It's namely one thing, and it's, if there's a state body involved in funding, permitting, or licensing of a project, then that state body needs to provide a project notification form to Mass Historical, and Mass Historical is authorized to look at the project impact area, and what they're going to be looking at is impact on any state register properties in that project impact area, or anything that's of historical or archaeological significance, and it's only Mass Historical that can determine that project impact area and determine if there is adverse impact.
And that review is triggered by the grant of a comprehensive permit?
It's actually triggered by the state body's role, their function, so in this case, Mass Housing is the state body.
Right.
It's their role providing funding, and so that alone triggers the review. Now, when does that review take place? As Attorney Simpson pointed out in his letter, he has talked to Mass Historical about what their policy is. It's usually done after a comprehensive permit is issued and before the final, the funding is finalized.
And it is independent of this process?
It's independent in the sense that Mass Historical, when they conduct their project review, they're going to ask for input from the public in general. They will also ask for the ZBA to provide any information if there was a design review, there was a working group, a design review or advisory team, they're just going to ask what happened during that process that could help inform, give them information about the proposal to take the place of the demolished building.
Well, I would expect, then, that we would, in writing the conditions for the comprehensive permit, indicate that the, that the Mass Historical should have, should review the project.
Well, we've reviewed that on previous 40Bs. We had one that was actually in the state register and national register eligible. We had another one in a local historic district, which automatically puts it in the state register, and we can't condition, we can only condition the actions of the applicant, we can't condition the activities of the state, but what we have done in both cases is that we, the town, have wanted to be kept apprised of all correspondence amongst Mass Historical and the applicant and Mass Housing regarding that matter.
Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Jonathan. Mr. Wyszynski.
Thank you, Chairman Geller, for the opportunity to speak, and I'm not formally speaking on behalf of the board, but I'd like to address some statements that were made in a letter written to Mass Housing after a public hearing, which, statements from that letter were quoted on a presentation by the developer, and the statement that was quoted in the presentation is, "The location of this project in the heart of Coolidge Corner meets most of the tenants of Smart Growth. The site is proximate to rapid transit on Beacon Street and bus service on Harvard Street, and is on the cusp of the largest commercial area in Brookline." And, yes, we did say that, and if you just stop there, it leaves you with an impression, but then the letter goes on to say, "However," [laughter] "the required demolition of an attractive circa 1921 Georgian Federal Revival style brick building, including the elimination of an existing apartment, is antithetical to the overriding sustainable development principle of concentrating development and mixed uses by encouraging remediation and reuse of existing sites, structures, and infrastructure." And that really expresses kind of the tone of the Selectmen's comments to Mass Housing. I'll just quote one more thing from the, from the letter. "Finally, the Board of Selectmen respectfully requests that Mass Housing encourage the developer to work with the town to achieve an improved project, one that has a much higher ratio of parking to number of bedrooms, and one that doesn't overwhelm the adjacent lower building to its left." And Mass Housing, in reaction to that, in their findings, states, "The applicant should be prepared to address municipal concerns relative to the size, scale, and architectural style of the proposed multifamily building and its impact on the character of the surrounding neighborhood. In particular, the applicant should be prepared to respond to..." In particular, the applicant should be prepared to respond to requests to mitigate visual impacts to abutting properties and increase the building's front setback on Center Street." So my pitch to the developers, one, if you're going to quote statements that I signed, please do so in a way that conveys the intent of the statement. But I don't want that to get in the way of good relations with the developer. And I'd like to extend an invitation to the developer to meet with the town and work with the town to come up with a better project that addresses some of the concerns of the planning department, some of the concerns that the Selectmen stated, and some of the concerns that the planning board stated. I would also like to pitch a particular pet project of mine. If you're really intent on being a transit-oriented project, I would invite you to sponsor a hubway station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to say who's too embarrassed to ask aside from me, but what's a hubway station?
Bikes.
A bike station, okay. And what does it exactly consist of? For the record, I'm just asking.
It's the region's bike share program, of which Brookline is an enthusiastic participant, and we're looking for sponsors to help us expand it.
Now, is it where the, outside, you have the little...
There's a station in Coolidge Corner. You take a bike out, you can join, and you can ride downtown and park there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's time for us to invite members of the public to offer their testimony. I would ask a number of things, and I mentioned these at the first hearing. One, please listen very carefully to what other people have to say. I'm more than happy to hear people underscore and tell me that they agree with information that we heard already. But I think it will make for a very long hearing if everybody says the same thing. So if you agree with somebody who has said something before you, just say, "I agree with them, and here's what else I have to add," and give us new information. The second thing I would ask is that keep, it's hard, this is a really hard ask, keep in mind what we are here to review. We are here to review issues that pertain to zoning and 40B. So try and keep within those parameters, and we're good. Third, again, I know there is a lot of interest, and people like to get excited when others say things they agree with, or maybe sometimes they even hiss when they hear things they don't agree with. What I would ask is, do that in your head. Because otherwise, again, it's going to make for a very long hearing. So I'll assume that you're applauding slash hissing. But allow people to get through their testimony, and then let somebody else come up. As before, as I mentioned before, if you do want to offer testimony, what we ask is that you speak into the microphone over here. Speak loudly and clearly, because tonight's hearing is being tape-recorded but also is being transcribed for a record. Start by giving us your name and your address. Just by, just sort of for informational purposes, how many people are interested in speaking? I'm going to trick you here, so you don't know what I'm going to ask. How many people are interested in speaking in favor of this application? Well, they'll be done very fast. How many people are here to speak in a neutral position? They'll also be done fast. And how many people are here to speak in opposition? I'm just looking for numbers. Okay, okay. So what I would suggest we do is we work from, why don't people actually, we'll do it this way, why don't you line up?
Chair Geller, if I may. Several neighbors actually organize themselves beforehand and have assembled a PowerPoint presentation with sequential topics to review.
Okay. So what I'd then like to do is, why don't we start with that presentation? Because that'll obviously give us a great deal of information. And then we'll follow on from there. And once that presentation is over, those who wish to speak beyond that, if they will line up to the side, on this side, will continue from there.
My name is Derek Chang. I live on Center Street. Many of us have written letters regarding this proposal that you've received. Tonight, we would like to get some highlights for some of the concerns that we have, echoing a lot of local concerns, as spelled out by the 40B statute, as well as some specific abutter concerns and legal issues that we have identified with this application. Harriet Rosenstein from Center Street will start off with misrepresentations by the developer in the application. Daniel Hill from Hill Law, we have retained to speak to some legal issues regarding this particular application. Alyssa Rosenthal from Winchester, 19 Winchester Street, will speak as the rear abutter. And Dawn Scherak from 50 Center Street will speak as the side of butter. Margaret McDonald will speak about pedestrian safety, as well as Marjorie Resnick. Marjorie Resnick will be speaking about the extreme parking shortage in Coolidge Corner. Tom Gutile from Wellman Street will talk about the impact of trash collection. Steve Pendry will discuss preservation. And Chuck Swartz will talk about design.
Thank you.
So we'll start off with Margaret Rosenstein, please.
I'm Harriet Rosenstein, and the mic is too high. Okay, I'm going to do it again. I am Harriet Rosenstein. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 9. And I live virtually across the street from 40. I live at 53 Center Street. And I think I need straight off to tell you that 40 is one of the buildings that has most enriched my life here in Brookline, and I have lived here for 37 years. Although I'm sure that you will see this image, or have seen it already, I think it's an important thing to try to keep in mind. The building on the left, of course, is 40 Center Street, as it has been since the time that it was constructed. The building on the right is the proposed development at 40 Center Street. I think you will see notable differences in height, in massing, in the works, okay? Certainly aesthetically. So here they are, and I think I'll just put it over here. Look at it. Block. Okay. I have come also to submit a petition which kept swelling. I can't even tell you how many people have signed this. 300, 400, I don't know. To whom should I present these? Okie dokie. Let me do that now?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. So, you keeping the record? Exhibit A? Sort of like Perry Mason.
What I would like to do, really, is to present a very sort of general overview of some of the reasons that we reject the proposed building, the proposed development as we know it. And I would like to begin this way. I believe that, well, this way, the reasons we have pro-opposition range from the pragmatic about which you have partially heard and will certainly hear from my colleagues, to what I think to be really profoundly ethical questions about this development, the proposal and the reasons behind it. So we will be talking then about the obvious, parking, safety, trash, all sorts of things like that. And we will be talking in that about the particular population who would certainly be deeply affected on Center Street. The elderly, the school kids who now are going to be shuttled over to the new temporary devotion school, and on, we will have conversation about that. My colleagues will elaborate. My own intent right now is to focus on just a few instances, a few examples, of what we believe to be and have experienced as the misrepresentation by the developer's representative, chiefly the architect, but he's obviously speaking for the developer. Misrepresentation and distortion of visions and of facts, all right? We have been told, for example, that ours was an area that had no singular identity, that it had no architectural coherence, that it represented sort of chock-a-block constructions one after the other. So that we are seeing here, 40 Center Street, and I think very interestingly, we appear to be looking at floors on 40 Center Street that are not on 40 Center Street. They belong to the house well behind the building at 19 Winchester Street. The effect, however, visually, and it's here that we're talking about misrepresentation calculatedly, the photograph is taken in such a way that it looks as if the building at 19 Winchester is actually getting ready to eat the building at 40 Center Street, that the proximity is such that the elevation of the proposed development at 40 Center really would make no difference. So I hope that is what, you're understanding what it is I'm trying to say. There is something calculatedly devious and dishonest in the use, commonly now, of this photograph as 40 Center Street is proposed. And then we contrast that distorted image with the image immediately beside it of 40 Center Street. We see the enormous difference, the great distinction, yes, between the two. This is not a statement about, this is not about distortion, but again, about reality. And here, you need, I think, to see, side by side, 40 Center as it exists, and 40 Center as the developer has proposed it. There's no need to comment, of course, on their sameness here. I had, all right, what we will be looking at next, as a way essentially of refuting the idea that there is an overriding incoherence in this area of Coolidge Corner, of Center Street, architectural incoherence, setback incoherence. Maria has pointed to some of this, but I would like us pleased to be able to look more particularly at, Eric? Yeah, come. Pause. Okay, this is Center Street. This is Center Street. 61, which is mismembered, that's actually 53 is where I live. You see that it's a well-maintained, genuinely Victorian house. We look next at 50, no, that is mine. We look at 61 Center. Again, a very handsome, dignified, beautifully maintained house. That's on the Center-Shaylor border. And we see the house, which is indeed my next-door neighbor at 69, again, another quite wonderful Victorian structure. These are not solitary, these are not singular. Our street, indeed, on one side at least, is comprised exactly of buildings like that. And you see that what you're looking at are two-and-a-half-story buildings, they all have 22 feet setback and more. And that is the way that an awful lot of us want to see our neighborhood continue. There is something that makes other people happy, too, on our street. They walk by, they don't even live in Brookline, and they say, "God, this is so nice. Boyo, boyo." And it is, and it is. And the representation of our area by the developer, calculatedly, does not provide images of this sort, a feeling of the neighborhood of this sort. As I was trying to say a moment ago, all the buildings, whether they are new constructions, whether they are 105 years old, whatever, on Center, this part of Center, have setbacks of 24 and 1/2 feet. That's the average. It's 22 on one side, 27 on the other. I can just read you what I've got here. You can read it up there. "The applicant improperly uses commercial zones on Harvard Street and Beacon Street as comparisons." This is apples and oranges, but the apples are bitter and the oranges are rotten, okay? What I had intended to speak to you about earlier, but I think much of it is not necessary any longer, is what Neil Wyszynski, not in his role as a select person, but Neil Wyszynski in his own right, presented, I think, with much grace and tact, his having been radically misquoted in the interest of the success, economic success, of this structure. You can read it all, there's no point, I think, in my reading it to you aloud, but do take a look at it. Do take a look at it. Look at the last paragraph, that I think I want to read to you. "The Board of Selectmen laments the growing tendency in essentially fully-developed communities like Brookline to replace existing structures, including residential buildings, with new buildings under the auspices of 40B. The proposed demolition of this property is an egregious violation of Smart Growth principles." Now, this is something that you need to keep in mind, the statement in its own right. And then take a look at what happened to it. Can you read it? We have two sentences which are stating exactly the opposite observation from the statement that was produced as was, okay? "The intention of the speaker and the intention of the representative of the developer are totally at odds." What we received in the public was, of course, just this little snippet. Now, this may seem to you a very petty point to make, but once again, what I think it reveals, what it manifests, is the willingness, here as a narrative, to be duplicitous in the interests of achieving one's goal. At a meeting in this room of this zoning board, Ms. Poverman asked of the architect to put stakes on the edges where the actual building is going to be, so we can see how much of the lot it actually is going to take up, which I believe is common practice, just stake it out. I'm not seeking any nods. Mr. Roth, absolutely. Ms. Poverman, thank you. Stake all of it. This is June the 9th, all right? Going for a date here. No, no, I've got it wrong, I'm sorry. That meeting was on 23 April. Site visit 9 June. An amazing thing happened. If you were not there, I think you would be surprised to know what happened. We all showed up, we wanted to see what was, in the most pragmatic, visible way, the structure that would occupy that space. There were no stakes. The requested stakes, requested in... The requested stakes, requested indeed in a fairly firm way, were not placed there. And when the architect was asked fundamentally, what happened, the response was, I forgot. Now, this is actually crucial. I'm not even offering the response, but the request. The request is crucial to give real, live people the experience of standing on a real place with real physically experienced dimensions. And then we'll say, God, this place is so big. And I think that it was really a sort of deft way of avoiding that kind of judgment by forgetting mistakes. Here, once again, it seems to me that there has been real misrepresentation and indeed a kind of violation of an insistent request. So I would say, yeah. My final example, and this is probably the most significant of them all, because it presents really deep ethical problems. So I want you pleased to consider this. This is the one I think really that matters more than an empty parking lot. The assurance now made about this building under 40B, if indeed it is approved, is that there will be 36 market rate units with 17 parking spaces. Now, that, on the face of it, of course, seems absurd. I think nobody would argue with that, so I will not. The question, I think, that needs to be proposed, if we are dealing with 40B, which is to say the need of people for affordable housing, and our deep sense that, of course, we need affordable housing here, but I would suggest to you, we need ethically devised affordable housing. The people who are living in the market rate 17, or more than that, but are having the 17 parking, are to pay 200 bucks a month to rent a parking space. There is no stipulation here at all that people requiring affordable housing will be provided with parking spaces at no cost. They're there because they are supposedly in distress of one sort or another. It's affordable. It's 40B. It's socially conscious. Yeah? Responsible, responsible community behavior. They should be granted, of course, at no cost, parking. And if indeed all of the people in the affordables do not need a parking space, I think our answer is, so what? Hold on to it, reserve it, because the next person who comes in into an affordable might need it. So don't play games here. Recognize what you're requesting and recognize also the ethical irresponsibility of coming in in this way with a 40B, which shows repugnable contempt, it seems to me, for the people who require affordable units and for the whole notion of 40B. Okay.
Thank you. Daniel Hill will follow next with some legal issues.
My name is Dan Hill. I'm attorney in Cambridge. My associate Caitlin Baptista is passing on a letter that I prepared today, not in time, obviously, for your packets, and we're giving the original to Maria and a copy to the developer. This letter essentially outlines our preliminary concerns with the project, our initial feedback. Just for background, I represent several of the neighbors and the butters to this project, most of whom are here tonight. And I just want to briefly kind of lay out some of our recommendations for the way the board may want to proceed with the application, and again, to lay out some of our initial concerns. Just out of background, I do a lot of 40B work. I've been practicing in the 40B arena for 15 years before the Housing Appeals Committee and the courts. I was last here in Brookline on the 45 Marion Street project on behalf of the neighbors on that project. Since you're familiar with 40B, I'm not going to launch into my usual discussion of what the standards of review are. You have competent consultants working for you, and Mr. Simpson, of course, is very familiar with 40B. But there's a couple myths that I wanted to spell from the start, because it seems to come up in every single project we hear, particularly projects where the SEB team is involved with. There is a myth that local bylaws and regulations don't apply to Chapter 40B projects. This is just factually incorrect. The role, let's take a step back. The primary function of 40B is to break down the barriers to affordable housing. Those barriers often are restrictive zoning, restrictive environmental controls. Doesn't mean those bylaws and controls are unreasonable and illegitimate. It just means that they cause development to be expensive. The function of the zoning board is to consider which of these bylaws and regulations should be waived for the project. And the very, probably the most important balancing test there is in Chapter 40B is to understand which of these waivers that the developer is asking for are really necessary to make this project work economically. And that really is what everything comes down to. And this project, more than any other I've worked on in the last few years, it really comes down to a very simple exercise. There is a list of a dozen waivers or so. These waivers are significant. We're talking about increasing the density that would be allowed on the site by five, a factor of five, increasing the floor-to-area ratio by a factor of four or five, decreasing the parking from basically down to what, 19% of what would ordinarily be required. These are very significant waivers. And really, it comes down to which of these does the developer really need to make this project work? Is there a middle ground? Is there, as the planning board, I think, is intimated, is there something that could work on the site? We all recognize that this site could accommodate higher density than two units or one unit that's there today, under the local zoning bylaw. I believe that the density that would be allowed on this site is eight units, based upon the size of the lot, as being a quarter acre. So somewhere between eight and 45, is there a reasonable compromise? You heard tonight that the density ratio here is 180 units per acre. That's very large, even for 40B. I'm not, I can't think of another 40B project that's that dense in a town like Brookline. Maybe in Boston or Worcester, but not in Brookline. In terms of this economic analysis, this is really the crux and probably the most important thing this board will do. The developer must justify his waivers. It's a developer's burden. It's a developer's burden on appeal if there's an appeal to the HAC. And the rules of the game, so to speak, at the HAC are imported into the zoning board's hearing. There's case law that says that. So the way I see this process taking place, and what most towns do when they handle 40B applications, is that they hire consultants, they use their in-house expertise, and they first figure out, are all the waivers identified? Because a lot of times they aren't, and it really is helpful to have somebody review the list to make sure that they're all put down on that piece of paper. And then second, what do we think about these waivers? Collect the testimony, collect the evidence from your in-house expertise, collect the evidence from peer reviewers, and of course, the public, boards and officials. And if the board decides, maybe we should not grant X, Y, and Z waivers, but perhaps we grant A, B, and C, then it's, they can then present those recommendations or initial feelings to the applicant, and then the applicant has the ability to come back and say, you know what, these are going to make my project uneconomic. And this is a process that I didn't make up. It's in the regulations that DHDD adopted, and it's what most boards in Massachusetts will employ. Now, that process, as the applicant might tell you, comes at the end, and that's the appropriate place for it. But it's important to start thinking about that today, because this is a very truncated process. It's six months, and you don't want to wait until the fifth month to start thinking about the economics. So we recommend, and it looks like things are on course, and I think you're very well represented by your in-house expertise, but there needs to be the initial evidence gathering stage, which is happening right now, and soon, we hope, the board will think about and make some initial feelers to the developer. This is what we're comfortable with, this is what we're not comfortable with. The developer provides his position as to what he can live with, and then the board has the ability to take that economic presentation the developer makes and vet it, fact-check it. Obviously, you're not going to take it at face value. And you have the ability to hire your own independent pro forma expert, 40B economics expert, and have that person provide you with some independent advice. So that's the process that we would recommend the board follow. And I also just want to make a note, in case it's not obvious, it's not all or nothing on these waivers. So in other words, the developer has asked for a general waiver from the front yard setback requirement to two feet, and you don't have to say yes or no. You can say, well, we're not going to give you to two feet, but we'll give you 15 feet or 10 feet. And the same thing with height, the same thing with density, 45 units or eight units. You don't have to say yes or no. It could be something in between. And we'd recommend you come up with the right numbers with the help of your planning staff after you've collected, of course, all the evidence. Now, even if the developer can make the argument that the project is uneconomic with the denials of the waivers that you might be thinking, you still have the ability to deny the waivers if the denial is based upon a local concern that outweighs a regional need for housing. Now, in most towns, you're not going to outweigh their need for housing, but Brookline's unique. You guys have 9.2, if that number is correct, it's from the applicant's application, 9.2% of your housing is subsidized in Brookline. So you're not that far from 10%, and of course, that's why we're seeing this rush of applications. That is actually quite significant in the standard of review. The Housing Appeals Committee and the regulations actually state that where a town has made a lot of progress towards 40B, the town's local concerns will be given more weight than they would be if the town has not made a lot of progress. So you are actually in a very good position, in my opinion, to say no to some of these waiver requests, if you can justify them based upon reasonable public safety, health, environmental or planning concerns, which I think you can. And in those concerns, to obey Mr. Geller's request earlier on, we agree, frankly, with most of what the planning board has said with respect to public, specifically with respect to the pedestrian safety. And that's a big concern of my clients, who live in this neighborhood and use these sidewalks on a daily basis. There are a lot of senior citizens that use these sidewalks, and we're very concerned about that. So one of the requests that we've made in our letter is that the board retain a peer review engineer, a traffic engineer, to evaluate this potential conflict between pedestrians and cars and trucks entering and exiting this building. Now, related to that, of course, is the lack of any loading areas for trucks and delivery trucks, lack of visitor parking. So we feel there's going to be a real traffic congestion, parking congestion impact from this project if it's approved in its current form. We also think that there's a lack of reasonable setbacks and buffers, and that is specifically important to the folks at 19 Winchester, who have a underground parking garage and a swimming pool very, very close to the property line. We have a very serious concern about the excavation that might occur on the project site and whether the excavation is going to impact the structural integrity of 19 Winchester Place's garage. Further, if stormwater is going to be recharged on the project site, as we expect it will eventually, we're very concerned, of course, with whether or not the hydrology changes on the project site will, again, affect the structural integrity of the building. Also somewhat related is that there is a row of trees. Picture attached is Exhibit A, right on the property line between the parking lot and the proposed project, and we want to make sure that those trees are preserved as part of any condition that this board imposes. Those trees provide shade to the parking lot and, of course, provides a natural buffer that's not easily replaced. One comment on the stormwater issue, while I have it on the top of my head. A comment was made, I think, by Mr. Ditto, that the applicant is not planning on addressing the stormwater management issue until after the footprint or the design of the building is resolved. I think that's actually doing it backwards. I think that the stormwater should be addressed upfront, because I think the stormwater management issue will inform the design and location of the building. If you can't have infiltration within a building, it needs to be outside the building, and you've got to have enough area for it, and it needs to be in the right place. And it seems to me that that should be addressed now and not wait until some other date in the future. Other concerns that we have are the lack of trash management. How is that going to be collected? And overall, incompatibility with the town's master plan, the comprehensive plan, as well as your Coolidge Corner design guidelines, which, although they've expired, they still provide an informative set of rules that are intended to facilitate smart planning in this neighborhood and can be relied on by the zoning board. These concerns are all driven by density. Let's face it, it all comes down to the fact that this is an overutilization of the site at 45 units. This isn't the first time that a 40B developer has attempted a project like this. In fact, there's a case from the Housing Appeals Committee that went to the Supreme Court where the 40B permit was, the denial of the 40B permit was affirmed on appeal, where the denial was based upon an overutilization of a project site. It was actually down the Cape, and the HAC, which normally rules in favor of developers, appropriately held that there was a lack, virtually zero open space, usable open space for the residents, and it was just too dense. I think if there's a project that would fit that fact pattern, it's this. There is zero usable open space. It's simply none. And so no resident is going to have anywhere to go to sit outside and just enjoy the fresh air. They'll have to walk to a park or walk to some other amenity that the town pays for and not the developer. And I think that's irresponsible and unnecessary. As I said before, this project can be scaled down, and a lot of these impact issues can be resolved with a much smaller project. In closing, I wanted to just briefly touch on the recommendations that we'd like the board to adopt, and there's five of them, so I'll make it quick. I mean, the first one is really just the waiver list, which we talked about. And I mentioned in my letter, perhaps the town could retain a civil peer review engineer. Of course, that's not necessary if you're going to rely on your in-house engineering, and that sounds adequate to me. But somebody needs to review this waiver list to make sure everything's been properly identified. And then, of course, you need advice from civil as to whether or not these waivers should be granted or if there's reasons to deny them. We just talked, we talked about the traffic peer review engineer. We would like the board to hire a traffic peer reviewer to study those issues. We would like the impacts on the abutting property at 19 Winchester Place evaluated by an independent peer review engineer, given the close proximity of the project to those structures. And then we would like the board to follow the process outlined in the regulations. At the end of the hearing, once you have an idea of what kind of waivers you want to deny or conditions to impose, that you put that to the developer, ask for the developer's position on the economics, and then have that vetted by a third-party peer reviewer. And then finally, on the planning issue, actually, there was a case that was just decided today from the appeals court, which Mr. Simpson, I'm sure, can give you a copy of, which deals specifically with a zoning board's ability to deny a project or condition a project based on a project's incongruity with the town's master planning. And it laid out, the case today laid out, the factors that are relevant to that kind of determination. This may be one of those cases where there are so many inconsistencies with this project with the town's comprehensive plan and the design guidelines, that you may find that you have a case where you can defensively deny this permit based upon planning. Or you may have a list of conditions, some of which may be design-related, architectural-related, as we heard today, that may mitigate those planning objections enough that you might be able to prove it. But I would recommend and ask that the board elicit more comments from the planning department as to the extent to which this project conforms or as to the extent to which this project conforms or doesn't conform to that comprehensive plan and the design review guidelines. I expect we'll be back at future hearings to provide more comment. We appreciate the board's diligence on this very important project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Is the Cape Cod case cited in your letter?
It is.
It's the Dennis case?
It's the Dennis case.
That's the Dennis one.
The Dennis case that's 50 units on three acres.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to getting that case, Mr. Simpson, today's case.
Alyssa Rosenthal will talk about the perspective of 19 Winchester Street.
My name is Alyssa Rosenthal. I am the chair of the Winchester House Condominium Plus. I live at 19 Winchester Street. I want to point out a couple of things upfront. We did a petition within our building. I think it's pretty significant that we had more response to this than we do at any of our annual meetings. We barely get a quorum at our annual meetings, and we got about a two-thirds majority of the building signing petitions against the proposed building. That is a site plan. That site plan shows 19 Winchester Street relative to 40 Center. The underground, the 19 Winchester Street has a pool above level. It is on top of our underground garage. That's the larger block there. The other block is our outdoor parking lot, which is adjacent to 40 Center Street. This, just as a general background, so it shows you just how much of an abutter we are because we abut on both, quite a few sides of the proposed. Most people have said a lot of what I'm going to say or what I prepared to say, but I think I'm going to add a little bit of a different spin to it, at least I hope I am. In the process of collecting petitions, both from the town at the farmer's market and also within the building, we heard some quotes, some comments, that I think might be lost unless they're mentioned here. It seems that the town, people are losing, people are annoyed about the town losing its open field. That's been mentioned before. They, the massing situation in Brookline, it's rampant. There's a very good quote from someone who said, "Brookline is becoming like Manhattan. Wherever there's an empty space, they wedge in a building. We don't want another building wedged in." The building that is being demolished fits in better with the neighborhood. I don't need to expand on that. Five-foot setback is very dangerous. We at 19 Winchester Street unfortunately had a situation where a pedestrian was killed when our garbage truck came out, when our hired garbage truck came out, went onto the street, couldn't see the pedestrian, the pedestrian was killed. That makes us real sensitive to those kind of safety issues. We, another quote on that, by the way, "This is an accident waiting to happen. There are so many seniors here trying to navigate Center Street as is." We object to the parking, as most people mention. Our building has almost a one-to-one ratio of parking to units. That's more logical. The farmer's market, we noticed that a lot of people park in our parking lot, even though we have signs, during the farmer's market. This is just going to make things worse. There's going to be no more parking. I'm getting more specific. Winchester House, we are very concerned about our substructure. That picture with the underground garage, our swimming pool is on top, the underground garage is, houses 60 vehicles, I believe. And this, the proposal has them, have them being very close to that borderline, which is now shaded by trees. Which is now shaded by trees. Yep, that was, yeah. So that's our parking lot. There's that much of a margin currently. There are, those are the trees that we were talking about and that the attorney mentioned. The proposal has, has that building coming even closer to where that car in the alleyway is. That just is unacceptable. We are concerned about, let's go back. We're concerned about the swimming pool. The swimming pool, as we mentioned, is above that garage in that diagram we saw. This is what it currently looks like. We have space, that's 40 Center Street, that you see behind the pool currently. We have the space there. We have privacy. We are really concerned that this building is just too close to our property. It essentially overhangs our swimming pool. I don't think there's anybody in this room that would want people overhanging a swimming pool that's meant for the enjoyment of others. It is almost like a violation of our rights to privacy having it that close. We also are concerned, obviously, about the non, not being able to use that amenity during demolition and construction. What is, what do we get, you know, is, how are they going to remunerate us for that? How is that going to happen? It's going to be too dangerous to be there during those things. The substructure, we, that is the picture of the pool, which is above our garage. We are very concerned about our substructure. I can't say that enough. We're afraid that with demolition and with construction, something is going to happen to the foundation of our building and our garage. It is just too close. Oh, sorry. We're also concerned about future. What about rain or leakage or runoff into our garage because the building is going to be that close and because of the management of the water coming from that building? What happens in five years? I mean, if this, we don't know where this developer's going to be in five years. How are we going to, how are we going to get, how are we going to get paid back for that? How are we going to get what we deserve as abutters? Let me, let me leave with two more quotes that really, I think, say it all as far as the way the town, not only 19 Winchester, but I'm hearing that the town thinks about this issue. And the first one goes, "I thought Brookline cared about its residents. This favors the developers' economic interests. What about the people who have paid their taxes for a high quality of life?" And another one, and I'll leave you with this one because I think it's very important, "How can the town allow this? Can something be done? Can something be done?" Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Don Sherek, 50 Center Street, resident there for 19 years. "At the May 23 town meeting, the architects provided a few selected computer-generated images that projected shadow impact on sunlight received to my home, 50 Center Street, as well as the kitchen of my neighbor at 6 Wellman Street," because we actually share a condo association, Thomas Gutile, "as well as the adjacent apartment buildings on that side of Wellman Street. When asked for more images, they demurred in the face, they demurred in the face of the developer's failure to supply significant data here on the visual impact of their proposed design that would inflict on the neighborhood, I've endeavored to provide some accurate accounting myself. In order to do this, I measured off 69 feet of ribbon, which is notched with bows every three feet, and attached several helium balloons, courtesy of party favors, and walked and waited for the breeze to subside. The photos from the front show the balloon attached to the chain-link fence approximately six feet from the edge of the sidewalk." So I'm conservative in that regard. So I'm giving you a slightly smaller frame than the actual proposed development. So six feet from the edge furthest from the, of the sidewalk from the curb. These photos are taken from my front porch, 50 Center Street, and provide a marker to help appreciate how far up and out this proposed project would extend and how much, not just of sunlight, but how much of the sky would be blocked out from the proposed project. The balloons placed at the back, I'll just advance to the next one here. Okay. The breeze didn't completely subside. They were blowing a little bit over towards the pool, but, so we're losing a little height, but that's okay. So you still have an idea. And there, here, I'm standing in the garden from the Wellman Street apartment building, approximately parallel to where my backyard is because of the fence, the stockade fence is down at present there. So, but looking straight out towards this, and you can see, if you sort of make it a straight angle approximately, how significantly much higher that would be. So again, they're tethered approximately six feet from the back of the project. It's clear that a substantial portion of the sky, as viewed from somebody at five feet height, would be obstructed. So I would ask to consider this, that not just a shadow factor, but also a substantial amount of the sky would be blocked out by this mass. As an aside, I note a number of discussions as I also was thinking about these trees and would ask the board to consider possibly also retaining a certified arborist to weigh in on the question of whether or not the proposed building in whatever final design comes forward would allow for the preservation of these trees, given whatever building and modifications goes on and how close it is to them. This proposed large boxy structure is substantially out of alignment with the intrinsic nature and feel of the surrounding community environment of Center Street. The proposed dormitory-style project would have a significant deleterious impact on the neighborhood and specifically on the quality of life of the abutters such as myself and would create a more of an urban canyon feel and a dark one at that. The project's height and mass, as proposed, would significantly detract from what makes Coolidge Corner be Coolidge Corner and what makes Brookline be Brookline. I recognize that change is coming and that something will be built. Therefore, I challenge the developers to go back to the drawing board and come up with a proposal that is less warehouse-like and more Brookline-like, with a setback consistent with the town and not with an industrial park and a building height that plays well with its neighbors. Towards that end, I propose the following slogan: Build four, but not more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marjorie Resnick and Margaret McDonald are going to talk about pedestrian safety.
Okay. I, Marjorie Resnick, I live at 19 Shaler Street. I've been there for 30 years. And this is my friend Margaret, who's one of the more than 410 senior citizens who live within one and a half blocks of this unit that's supposed to be built. So Margaret and I are here because she and her husband like to walk, and they like to walk on the streets that are safe. But many times, people with walkers double up. So there are two people walking together. Right now, on Center Street, two people can fit easily because of the setbacks. Were this project to be developed in the way it's been conceived by the current, current architects and developers, there would be no more possibility for Margaret, her husband, and the other 410 pedestrians who potentially walk on that street. In some other facts about this, speaking to the people who run the senior housing, I found out that approximately 40% of the people who live in those, that housing are visually impaired. For visually impaired people, there's nothing worse than a hidden driveway or a driveway from which the driver cannot see clearly pedestrians behind him or her. So this development is on the major conduit from senior housing to Beacon Street. We've heard a lot about how great the neighborhood is because seniors and other people, I'm pretty senior myself, but that we can all walk to public transportation. We need that block. The 410 seniors living in senior housing have no other way to get to Beacon Street. That's the development, that is the block they walk on. Okay. I have to say that there are a number of people who are blind in senior housing. Those people, too, will be extremely vulnerable to the current plan. Finally, I want to say that schoolchildren count, too. And we do have the devotion school being rebuilt, and it seems to me that it behooves us all to think about the way Center Street will be trafficked at 8 o'clock in the morning and at 2:15 as hundreds, literally hundreds of schoolchildren walk up that street to get to the Webster Street addition that's going to be used in the next two years. I want to say something about congestion because congestion does dovetail with safety. Why? In my home institution where I teach, we do transportation studies. The worst, and I looked this up today, the worst distracted driving takes place where people don't know where they're going. They're not going from A to B. They're circling round and round. And who are those people who are circling round and round? They're the assistants for the 410 units, 410 people who may need assistance. They're people who want to shop in Coolidge Corner. They're people who are going to apparently live without cars. And while I am 100% in favor of green development and people using bikes, reality shows that if you're working in Framingham and you have to be at your job at 8 o'clock in the morning and you have kids, you're not going to bike there from 40 Center Street. Finally, I'd like to add to the anecdotal evidence some hard facts, which I'm really into. Okay. In 2007, our Transportation Board here in, in Brookline, I'm just looking at, did this study of occupied spaces by location. Now, this is not anecdotal. These are the facts, guys, and things have gotten worse. In 2007, there were, between Harvard, Harvard Street, between Beacon and Williams, the average was over 90% capacity, average usage. And this is metered space and parking lots. In the metered spaces on Beacon, between Harvard and Winchester, over 90% average parked, used. And in the Center Street East Municipal Lot, 93%. Now, that was in 2007. Things have gotten worse. In the next two years, the devotion school will be redeveloped, and of the 143 spaces reserved, well, that are possible now for users on the Center Street Lot, there are going to be 20 spaces reserved for devotion teachers who are displaced by the closing of the devotion school and who will be teaching on Webster Street. Of the 56 spaces that are now reserved for Coolidge Corner employees, 15 will be reserved for teachers. So we're going to lose 18% of our parking spaces in our two combined municipal parking lots. Finally, we all know that the JCHE project and the devotion project are going to eliminate parking, at least for the time that those massive construction projects are being completed. So we're going to lose the metered spaces on Harvard Street in front of KI, and we're going to lose the spaces on Williams Street because they'll have to close Williams Street to do the development. And I went to the devotion school meeting, and they're going to try to divide the, I'd say, the pain of not having parking between Harvard Street and Stedman Street. But those two streets are going to lose, right now, there's metered parking in front of the devotion school. That's going to be lost during the next two years. And the regular street parking on Stedman Street is going to be lost over the next two years. So finally, I would like the board to please consider the harm, not only for those of us who live there, but for clients of stores and businesses in Coolidge Corner, for the assistance of the senior citizens. for the assistance of the senior citizens who live right within one block of this proposed development, and for the children who walk on that street every single day to school. And so, please, don't encourage more distracted driving. Anyone who lives where I do, on Shaler Street, watches people go round and round, and they get really desperate, and they get on their cellphones, and they say, "Hey, I can't get to your house because I can't find any parking." They pay no attention to pedestrians. And anyone who's tried to cross Harvard Street to Babcock, that crossing knows that, how dangerous it is. I drive it every single day. And no one pays attention to the lights, because everyone has a cellphone. But when asking you, and Margaret's asking you, for the sake, she doesn't like talking in public, but I don't care. Do you want to talk in public, Margaret? Come on, no. She decided not to become a professor in her earlier life. But anyhow, we'd ask you, please, to consider the population when you think about the size, the mass, the lack of parking in this proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Guthisle. I live at 6 Wellman Street, right on the corner of Center. And actually, that's illusionary, because I'm an abutter in the sense that the shadow and mass of the proposal will block light and sky from my kitchen windows and skylights. But I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about a more colorful topic, which is the impact of trash collection. This is a Brookline TAB article, and you can decide if you see it as valid and worthy. This was the idea that the average Brookline household dispenses of 26.5 pounds of trash per week. And doing the math, 45 units will generate 1,200 pounds of trash per week. Now, those numbers may be a little abstract, but let's get concrete for a moment. This represents 30, that's three, zero, 35-gallon trash carts along the sidewalk, which is a row 55 feet long and two feet deep. Imagine half a football field, and you'll have a rough idea of the lineup of trash materials. That doesn't even mention the issues of recycling. So this is just straight garbage. These substantial articles, obstacles already block the sidewalk or road in winter, especially when you've got a berm of snow up against the sidewalk. It's an additional threat to pedestrian safety. Okay, now let's take a look at some pictures. This is June 19th, 2016, existing trash. Now, it doesn't look like much, and of course, it isn't that much. But let me just show you one thing. See, is there a, here we go. Take a look at this recycling bin, and look at its surrounding. And what you'll notice is that here's the lawn and the setback of the building. Here's the sidewalk, which is, as you can see, unobstructed, because the recycling bin is in this outer green space, if you want to call it, where the tree is. Tree sort of defines this area. So these items do not block the sidewalk, in part because there is this additional space here, and because of the setback issue. Okay? Now, what happens to the trash from the proposed structure? Well, if you put it out front, because the structure comes right up to the sidewalk, you're going to block the sidewalk in front of the building. So it's a dead block. Someone in a probably altered state of mind suggested wheeling the trash to Wellman Street. And since I live on Wellman Street, right where that B is, I'm imagining half a football field of other people's garbage cans right in front of my house. So that's a potentially unworkable situation. And unfortunately also, and this is out of my area, but I point out, the current design of the structure doesn't allow in-garage access for the trucks. So one solution would be, at some level, to have the truck go into the underground garage, load them up there, and then they drive out, obviously with their vision impaired, but let's leave that for the moment. And then, that solution itself also won't work. So that needs modification in some form. Now, this over here, here we go. See this thing here? This is called the garbage truck. And it's right here, next to recycling bin and garbage and so forth. And here's the yellow line down the middle of the street. So here is a poor driver trying to sneak his way around this truck in the wrong lane. And I think that probably has some safety implications, which I don't pretend to be expert in, but you could probably figure them out for yourself. And so that's pretty much the concern. This is a major issue with a huge volume of materials, and needs to be addressed in some way. I leave that to the discussions and to the board. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Pendry, 26 Winchester Street. I want to thank the board for hearing us tonight. And the evening is getting late, and I'll try and keep this brief. A question came up earlier this evening about there being a report that was prepared prior to the, well, in response to the application for demolition. And there's a question as to whether this was a report. I want to show this to you. And the title is Preservation, Brookline Preservation Commission Demolition Application Report. It's a three-page report, but it's a report. That, being only three pages on a building with a complicated history, I need to move this slide to the next one, that you're sort of in this situation where you have, well, basically, a three-page report that actually identifies significance of this property, but then it doesn't go into any more detail. So it leaves open the question of how significant is this property? And that, I want to refer to another document, and that's the response of the neighbors who are Coolidge Corner, response to a letter sent by Mr. King, Mr. David King, who's the chair of the Brookline Preservation Commission, to Mr. Geller. And the last paragraph of our response, we indicated that, and this is based on research done by Town Council Jonathan Simpson, that, in fact, the Massachusetts Historical Commission will review the 40th Center Street project notification form for possible adverse effects once the project has received a comprehensive permit. And that the ZBA will have the opportunity to provide input into this process. And I, you know, I raise the question of what are you going to do? You have this three, this old, 10-month-old, three-page report on the significance of this property. And it would be a shame if you don't use this report, because taxpayers, you know, paid for its preparation by Greer Hardwick and the Preservation Commission. If you don't use it, then basically it would be conceding the decisions about Brookline's historic significance to the Massachusetts Historical Commission. In any event, my purpose tonight is simply to review quickly the history of this property, based on Greer's research. And that we see that it was built in 1921. That, I want to just point out, too, that maybe some of the people in this room are thinking, "Well, this property can't be significant. I mean, it was occupied by immigrants, and a fairly obscure Boston-born architect. So why spend the time with this?" I think we need to think about that. How many of our properties in Brookline that are preserved and protected actually represent these groups? Well, that's something, that's a question for the Preservation Commission itself. In any case, Ellis Snyder, born in Russia or Poland around 1890, came to America in 1905. And he eventually worked his way up to become the treasurer of the Boston Wharf Company. And he lived at 40th Center Street until he died in 1964. So this gentleman, unlike some people in this room, actually was a Brookline resident. And he lived at this property. George Jacobs, the architect, was Boston-born. And already, he became known for his apartment buildings, including buildings on Park Drive, Commonwealth Avenue, Boston Street, and the St. Mary's Street area in Brookline. But most importantly, and this didn't even merit a photograph, because we all know the building extremely well. It's the Coolidge Corner Arcade Building, designed in 1927. And there was the opportunity, maybe the opportunity still exists, to actually define a historic district in this area, that you have two buildings that were designed by the same architect that face each other at this point. And you have an adjacent building to 40th Center Street that itself, up until this point, hasn't really received much historical research attention. But with three potential properties of a historic district, that the issue of whether the Massachusetts Historical Commission would in fact consider processing an application or a nomination for the listing on the National Register would change the situation entirely, because it would be, well, even if Mr. Roth declined to support the nomination, if a majority of property owners within a district do approve, then that allows the keeper of the National Register, Stephanie Toothman, a Park Service colleague of mine, actually to find, to approve, or at least consider approving such a nomination, you know, if it warrants it based on other criteria. There's also a, I think, a, maybe a mistaken perception that the criteria used by the Brookline Preservation Commission for their significance actually is different from that of the National Register. And basically, it mirrors or reflects the National Register criteria, okay? So that basically, if it meets the criteria, the National Register criteria will meet, you know, Brookline's criteria, because it provides for properties that are significant at the local and regional levels. Okay, so what is the significance here, regardless of how you trace back these criteria? Essentially, because of this architect, this building is associated with one or more significant historic persons or events with a broad architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of the town, or Commonwealth. And one of the occupants, Dr. Becker, apparently is responsible for bringing many people into this world on that property. That itself has not been pursued. And undoubtedly, there are other areas of potential significance that haven't been considered yet. D, the building is historically or architecturally significant in terms of its period, style, method of construction, or its association with a significant architect or builder, either by itself as part of a group of buildings. And again, this is quoted from a document prepared by the Brookline Preservation Commission. So, why is this building not being considered for a National Register listing? And Town Council did some research on this, and it's important, because, I mean, it's, the truth of the matter is that our state historic preservation officer will not consider listing a property where the owner does not give consent. And this issue with owners giving consent actually goes back to 1980, when the National Historic Preservation Act was revised. I found an interesting article on this topic. And it finds that the consent provision was not in the public interest. The large businesses pushing for it were also large political donors. And Congress was not facing similar pressure from citizen constituent groups because of the collective action problem. So yes, this is a law, but even on the day that it was enacted, it was controversial, and still remains as such. So recommendations for this property, what to do? I think simply it's important for the town to proceed in good faith, and to continue to do research, and to document this property. I think this document will be helpful in transferring to the Mass Historical Commission when they sit down with the PNF. And perhaps they'll decide, for certain reasons, that it's not significant. But it will save them the time and trouble of doing that research. Perhaps if the town in Brookline does it, will discover something important about that property we don't presently know. I might also note, if something happens to this building after the demolition stay is lifted, and it's destroyed, this documentation actually itself will be valuable documentation for architectural historians later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chuck Swartz. I live at 69th Center Street. I'm also a town meeting member. And I want to talk about Center Street in a slightly different manner, Center Street as a whole. A lot of what I intended to say has been covered by Maria and by Harriet Rosenstein. But I'd like to present Center Street, first of all, with odd side versus the even side of the street. Now, this is a look down the odd side of the street, looking from the parking lot north. Some of these houses you've already seen. But I wanted to show you the, not only the setbacks, but the height lines. There are 25 buildings on Center Street. 20 of them are three stories or less. Two of the buildings are four stories. But because they have flat roofs, their height is just slightly above the three-story Victorians. Many of these houses and buildings on the odd side of the street are from 80 to 115 years old, and many of them remain intact. This is the building that is in question. This is the block, the even side, the block between Wellman Street and Beacon Street. This is the only block on the even side of the street where the original buildings are intact, and where the height line is preserved. These two buildings, along with number 50 Center, are three stories or less. Now, during the, probably from the 60s on, the rest of the even side of Center Street has been significantly altered. Some might say decimated. Larger buildings were built to replace some of the fine Victorian homes that you've seen. This is the block between Wellman Street and William Street. There are three buildings now on this block. One of the remaining Victorians. Next to it is number 70 Center Street, which has been mentioned. And next to that is 40 William Street, one of the four-story buildings that has a height that is comparable to the remaining Victorians. The block between Fuller Street and William Street is really, has really been altered. This is the remaining house on that block, and it is surrounded by two tall buildings. By the way, the question was asked earlier by one of you what the parking ratio was in the other two high-rise buildings. And because these buildings are for senior housing, the parking is not as significant a factor as it might be in other areas. But I just wanted to point out what has happened on the even side of the street versus the odd side of the street. My wife says that she knows of no other neighborhood in North Brookline that has been as decimated as Center Street has been. This is a neighborhood garden. It's actually in the parking lot, and it's directly opposite 40th Center Street. These are some of the neighbors working on planting this area just last spring. And if you go by the parking lot, please take a look. And I hope you appreciate a little bit of greenery that we brought to this area of Center Street. This is the block on the odd side between Fuller and William Street. Notice that there are two really beautiful Victorians. There was a third, and yes, it was in the space occupied by that box. In the early 2000s, there was a 40B proposal to replace probably the most beautiful Victorian on the street with a 40B six-story, 36-unit building. Many of the people that are here tonight showed up in opposition to that building. The town actually did reject the 40B proposal. And the developer settled for building this building that he could do as of right. But as you see, it just doesn't really fit in with what we have in Center with what we have in Center Street, and I'm afraid what might happen to Forty Center Street might mirror what's happened here. And once these buildings are lost, we're not going to get them back. So this is my view of Center Street. I did want to mention a couple of other things. First of all, there has been no mention of adaptive reuse of the building, and I would suggest that people take a look at the building at 99 Winchester Street, a Victorian that was redeveloped, and the existing structure was maintained, and additional housing was added. Something like this can be done with Forty Center Street. We can have additional housing, we can maintain a beautiful building, we just need the willingness of the developer to do this, and we would also like to have some input. I know it's been mentioned that input from the town, but nobody has mentioned input from the neighbors and what to do with this property. Finally, it has been mentioned, transit-oriented projects has been mentioned. About two years ago, we had a meeting with the Transportation Board concerning the licensing of the Bridge Bus Service, and at that meeting was a representative from the T, and when the question was asked, "How do you feel about this form of competition, about another form of public transportation being offered?", the response from the T representative was, "We're over capacity. We cannot handle the capacity that we have." So I wanted people to keep that in mind when you talk about transit-oriented projects. The T cannot really handle, especially on the Green Line, especially on the C Line, the number of people that ride it now, so maybe the idea of transit-oriented projects in Coolidge Corner just isn't going to work as well as some people think it might. So please take all of this into consideration, and I hope we can do something to have a better project and something that can maintain the character of Center Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask about, just about your last comment? Is there a report or any kind of statement about the capacity of the C Line that you could provide or point us to?
This was at a meeting of the Transportation Advisory Committee. I could go back and try to find those records, and if I can, I'll be happy to send them to you.
Is that Brookline's Transportation Advisory Committee?
Yes.
And you know about what date?
It was probably, maybe somebody can help me out, probably at the end of the summer two years ago, when we noticed large buses were riding on Center Street, and we inquired as to what was going on, and we found out about the beginnings of the Bridge transportation system, and we worked out a plan that would accommodate them and accommodate the people on Center Street.
Mr. Chang.
My wife and I own Unit 809 at 19 Winchester Street, and I wanted to make a few comments based on what I heard here tonight. I don't have anything prepared. The garage situation, people backing out of there or coming out of that garage. I was on Harvard Ave the other day, across the street from where they're going to put in the other proposed 40B, and two kids on bicycles came flying by down the street past me, and of course I had choice words for them because they almost hit me, but then I thought about time when I was a kid, and I used to fly up and down my street, and a lady was backing out of a blind driveway, and I ended up under her car. Wasn't a good situation. I mean, it was, my head was about four inches away from the tire, and so, you know, a warning for this building, the way it's being put up. The pool at 50 Winchester Street, that pool is very important. It's not just a nicety or anything like that, it's very important. Many of the people who rent the apartment, that's the dealmaker. They see the pool, and that flips them. It's very important to that building. Firefighting, I don't know if you folks handle the firefighting issues, but if you look at that, look at 19 Winchester, if the fire department's going to fight a fire at the back of that building, they're going to have to come into 19 Winchester. They're going to have to go up some stairs and through a locked gate to get into the patio area. Then when they get into the patio area, they have to go into another locked gate to get, in effect, a double-locked gate, maybe even triple, because I think the pool guy told me that there's some lock that he only has the key to, so that people can't just walk into that pool any hour of the day. So he has to, they have to get through that, and they're going to have to fight the fire with that, between, with the pool between them and the property line. So they're basically going to have to shoot over the pool. That's got to be a safety hazard for them. If they fall into that pool with their equipment, they're going to drown. I mean, there's no way. Now, the water infiltration into the building, that has me a bit concerned, well, very bit, very concerned, because the reason I own that property is that it's part of my retirement. I don't have a pension, so I'm trying to augment it with income from rentals. I own two other units in this town. We actually used to live on Winchester Street at one point, at 50 Winchester, with my wife, who owned that unit when we met. So I've been a resident, and I've been a landlord in this town. But anyways, if something happens to that garage, be it gets damaged in building, or the water infiltration causes a problem down the road, and we get hit with any major assessments, that's going to cause me a problem. Now, as a word to Mr. Roth, may want to pay attention, I've been a landlord here and renting now for 27 years. I rented a place once in 90 minutes. That was one of the apartment at 50 Winchester. That was several years ago. This year, it was a different story. I also was a rental agent at Caldwell Banker for a while as well, so I know the area very well. This year was the worst year in 27 years to do rentals. One of my rents went down $175, another one $150. Why? Because it's overbuilding. If you go to, by Fenway Park area, you might as well be in Manhattan. There are just nothing but skyscrapers there, and they're discounting heavily. If they can't rent an apartment, they'll give two months' rent free. If somebody rents it within 45 minutes of looking, within two days of looking at the apartment, they'll give them another month's rent free. So basically, they're cutting their rents down to Coolidge Corner level rents. And I lost the month of June, for example. Right now, I have one empty apartment for the month of June. It's just gotten very difficult, too much overbuilding, you know? So keep that in mind as well, and Mr. Roth should keep that in mind when he does his figures. So that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add a brief comment, is when the property is properly staked out for a walkthrough, again, I'd be happy to come back with a 70-foot string and balloon so we can see accurately how high the building goes.
This isn't a cheap opportunity for you to play at balloons, is it?
Hi, my name is Esther Kopinos. I live at 19 Winchester Street in Apartment 812. I pulled from the Coolidge Corner District Plan dated March 2017, Chapter 4, Page 38, Protecting Neighborhoods, Zoning Historic Preservation, and Neighborhood Conservation Districts. The DPC members generally agreed that preserving existing consistent residential streetscapes makes sense for many reasons, such as the following. Residents who make a decision to live in certain area, in a certain area, should be protected from dramatic changes in character to their neighborhood. Second, consistency in development patterns protects property values and their corresponding assessed and appraised values. The other items on this list have already been addressed, but those are the two that I'd like to address. Certainly, being at 19 Winchester, we have certain things that make our property value high, our condo fees high. One of those is the pool, which has already been addressed, I'm not going to get into. But the other one is, and I know that, I don't remember her name, but who spoke earlier, the height isn't a big issue, but for many residents that live on the fifth, sixth, seventh, certainly on the eighth, and even the ninth floor, that, right now, our property value is pretty high because we have such an incredible view of Brookline, of the Boston skyline, Cambridge, et cetera, et cetera. With the proposed plan being six stories high, and certainly apartment buildings being built today, the ceilings are a lot higher than they were being built in the 50s or 60s or before. So at eighth story, we're not going to be able to see the skyline anymore, and our property value will decrease, and, you know, that's something that I would like to have the board take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? You're waving your hands. You're not being friendly. There is somebody else.
Hi, my name is Don McNamara. I live at 12 Wellman Street. I just wanted to bring up one thing that I think hasn't been totally discussed. So 12 Wellman Street and our neighbors are row houses, so you can kind of picture our buildings as like a tube. We have windows at the front and windows at the back, and our tube is pointing directly at the side of this building, this proposed building. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the view from the street and the setback from the street, but I think the majority of the massing is on the side view, and that is a direct impact to 12 Wellman Street and our neighbors. I just wanted to bring that up and ask that it's reviewed as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Nope? Okay.
I want to give the, first of all, I want to thank everyone for their testimony. I want to give the applicant an opportunity to rebut at this time. Certainly, we have another hearing scheduled, and you'll, obviously, we'll have peer review at that point, I hope so, and you'll have an opportunity to speak then, but while these comments are fresh, I don't know whether you had planned to say anything. Up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeff Engler from SCB. I represent the applicant in this case. I don't think it's our intent or objective to specifically rebut anything that was mentioned this evening. In fact, I'd like to thank the neighborhood. Clearly, they put in a lot of time and effort in the presentation, a lot of thought went into it, and I think there was some good information that was communicated. Now it's our responsibility to synthesize that, look at, see what we can do, what we can't do. Obviously, some of the things we disagree with, some of the points, I think, are more valid than others, and we will make a sincere effort to look at all that. I know it's provided to Maria, she'll pass it along to us, but a lot of what we heard tonight, frankly, is not new, but we've been waiting to hear a lot of these comments, so now it's incumbent on us to go back and, also, in combination with what we hear from the peer review consultants, who are going to get very technical in their evaluation of the plan. So I think the whole combination of that input will be, will certainly be valuable. I mean, things like not staking out the property, the board and the neighborhood have every right to be upset about that. That should have been done. I mean, there's no excuse for that. Fortunately, we're early enough in the process where that can be rectified and it can be done. We'll get everybody back out there and provide the information that the board and the neighborhood was expecting, so that'll get done. So we, there's no hiding from that. I think it's important to know, though, that, I mean, part of this project, in large part, was modeled after a 40B that the zoning board of appeals approved at 45 Marion Street, which is more dense than this project, less parking, and in a very similar neighborhood. And that's, the similar neighborhood comment is a little bit subjective, but relative to its context within Coolidge Corner, it's not totally dissimilar. So I think it's important to know that this was not extracted out of left field relative to what was proposed. There has been a precedent that was set in this area of Brookline. Obviously, we've seen lots of photos tonight presented by the neighborhood. We presented photos of big buildings previously, and I would subject that, you know, it's probably somewhere in between relative to the context of the neighborhood. But if somebody, and I understand people in this room are intimately familiar with the neighborhood, and I don't dispute that for one second, but if you brought somebody in that was not familiar with Brookline or Coolidge Corner and asked them, "How would you characterize the architecture in this area?", I don't think that they would focus exclusively on two-and-a-half-story Victorians. They would look at the totality of the area, tall, short, dense, not dense, and that's our position. I know it's architecture is subjective, so that'll play itself out. One thing I will mention, there's been no documentation of any kind ever in the history of 40B about 40B developments of any kind decreasing property values. That's just a nonstarter. It's not something the board can consider, and it's just not true. So if somebody has something they want to submit for the record, I'd be happy to see it, but I've never seen anything in all our experience. And then lastly, and I wasn't going to mention this, but the legal counsel retained by the neighborhood, you know, disparages SCB relative to how we treat the regulations of 40B and the comprehensive permit process. It's our job to know the regulations and to advise our clients appropriately. We've been involved in more units of 40B housing than anyone in the state, and we know the regulations, and we know what areas are subjected to your review and what aren't. We know what areas our client, my client, is at risk and where he or she isn't. So I take umbrage to the fact that that characterization. We look forward to a collaborative interchange of ideas with the board and the neighborhood, and then sometimes you agree to disagree, and at that point, we fall back on the regulations. We file back on legal precedent. Dan Hill talks about attempting to find compromise. Let me make it very clear that his firm is the preeminent firm to fight 40B housing in the state. He's fighting us on 10 units and three buildable acres. He fights lips. He fights big projects. He fights small projects. He is, and this is a credit to him, he is prolific relative to how many butter appeals he is undertaking right now. So he gives the impression that he's here to compromise on some sort of project, and he proposes a project that is either financially unfeasible, can't be built, or any number of things, and he makes it sound like, "Aren't we being reasonable?" He's not, and he would admit, we're on opposite sides of the ledger on, I think, four or five projects as we speak, and other people I know quite well have, one counsel I know quite well has six different cases against Mr. Hill right now. So I know Dan very well, and I know how he advises his clients. Now, with that said, we don't want to get tied up in appeals for the next year, two or three. That doesn't make any sense, and it's not good for us, it's not good for the neighbors. So we will hopefully find some common ground, but, you know, I don't appreciate when he says we don't, he didn't, and I'm paraphrasing, that we take the regulations loosely. We don't, we take this process very seriously, and we will continue to hopefully represent as much. So with that said, we have a lot of work to do, we've heard a lot of good comments, and we certainly will look at all of those, engineering, traffic, architecture, and otherwise, and we will endeavor to provide a plan that is changed, and hopefully to the better. I mean, obviously, I don't think we're going to be able to satisfy everybody, but hopefully that we keep going in the right direction. So with that said, I appreciate the time tonight. We look forward to appearing before you on, I believe, August 1st, you said.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to take a moment. I've heard, I heard the audience today, and I listened, and I've got advice, and I just wanted to leave this hearing, letting people know that we want to make this site a very safe site. We will make every effort in making this a safe site for the elderly, for everybody. I think it's important to have it safe, and I'm willing to compromise in order to make this project safe. The other thing is, is that I'm committed to making the building a very elegant building. I mean, people do not like the architecture, but I'm certainly open to discussion on changing the architecture of the building. If it's not fitting in the building, if it's not fitting in the neighborhood, and people think that there's a more fitting style to this building, I'm all ears.
Thank you very much. So again, I want to thank everyone. I want to thank members of the public who offered testimony. I want to thank none of the people from the town departments or boards who are still here except for Maria. You're so you're stuck. And I want to thank the developer for those last comments, which I found encouraging. So you clearly were listening to testimony and I appreciate that. Our next hearing is August 1st at 7:00 PM. And at that point, we are planning to hear a preliminary report from the architecture peer reviewer. I believe we'll also hear from other peer reviewers? Is that correct?
No, it was just only architecture.
Only architecture. Okay. So we will hear from the architectural peer reviewer. Again, information on these hearings are posted online so that all of this information will be available to people for access. If you have additional comments, you're not cut off from getting them to us. Again, I want to urge people to submit them in written fashion. That's particularly helpful for us. And you can certainly do that by sending them into Maria at the Planning Department and she will make sure that they're distributed to everyone. So again, thank you. Yes.
One more. When I say architecture, we're also talking about site circulation and safety as well. There will be a traffic peer review. It'll just come later in the process, but that's not, it doesn't preclude.
Okay.
Those are some questions I have since I've not been through this on this side before, which is exactly what sort of peer reviews we get? Because a bunch of things were mentioned today. So I don't know if this is the time. I need to ask you, Maria, when do we find out which ones we actually want? For example, there is a discussion of a review of the exceptions. I assume that you and our specialist.
Are you talking about waivers?
Yes, the waivers are the people who really.
Regarding waivers, waivers are not overlooked whatsoever. The Building Commissioner chose not to discuss that at this time. But he, the Building Department and the Planning Department will be reviewing waivers with the Director of Engineering and Transportation.
Okay. And I was also found somewhat persuasive, Mr. Hill's comment about the how do you do a STAM, Storm Water Management Review unless you know what the building's actually going to look like and where is the horse and the carton this?
So regarding that, Mr. Ditto made it really clear that the infiltration system needs to be outside of the building, therefore outside of the building footprint. And he alluded to a fairly favorable or positive conversation with the developer. That could mean that they're setting the the front yard or the or the or the rear yard, they're increasing the setback to to put the infiltration system outside of the footprint. So but Mr. Ditto's comment about having that infiltration system outside means the footprint has to be smaller.
Okay.
Is it going to be a stormwater person or is?
I think Mr. Ditto, if he's still here, I don't think he is, I think his department will assume that role.
And so there was also the discussion of, so the the traffic reviewer, the, let's see, I've got various notes all over the place here. So getting a traffic engineer and the transportation analysis and crash data, do we now put in process getting the peer reviewers, the analysis for that? So that if it's not at August, it's a September hearing?
Right. So Planning Director Steinfeld is, it's in procurement right now, the RFP, for the traffic peer reviewer. So I think it's just in procurement now and and that's that's all I can say say about it.
So the request that Mr. Ditto gave to for us to authorize the approval of retention of one?
The peer reviewer, she act, she definitely acted on that. So that's in process, yes.
So, okay. And the crash data that was requested in Mr. Ditto's letter, we can just assume that all of that is going to be followed up on?
Yes.
I'm also confused about what the status is of the shadow studies.
Okay. So as part of my review of the application for completeness, I looked at what is required by the state regulations and local regulations. So an additional item that I requested that is outside the requirements of the regulations would be a shadow study conducted at each hour of the day over 24-hour period, four times. So it is, the project team is not providing one at this time, but they are not precluding providing one later during peer review if that's requested.
Could we request it?
I've requested it and I we will request it again. We will insist on it.
Okay. Do you mind if I just check through my scribbles for one more second?
Go ahead.
Oh, and I assume that the impact on abutting properties will one relate to what the final design is, but would also be addressed by an independent engineer, their own engineers or the Building Department would help assess that? The structural integrity?
Yeah, I'm actually going to just refer those questions. I'm going to start with the Director of Engineering because often what they're looking at is, they are going to be looking at issues like that. So I will, I'll just refer those questions to to Mr. Ditto.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everyone. Thank you, Maria. And we will see you August 1st. Thanks. I got to talk to you.